Good evening. My name's Jason Delisle, President of the Speedway Town Council. It's 7:00 PM, April 1st, 2024, and I call this meeting to order. We'll start off with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, introductions. To my right is Town Manager Grant Klinehans.
Good evening.
Town Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Town Councilor Sean Harold.
Good evening.
And to my left is our Town Attorney Bob Glutter.
Evening.
Our Clerk-Treasurer Philip Faust.
Hello.
Town Councilor Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
And our Vice President, Extergen.
Good evening.
All right, our first item is approval of minutes from our March 11th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting.
I'll second.
All right, any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving our minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes approved, 5-0. Next is a special event request for Amateur Radio Field Day by Jeff Hammer.
Good evening, council members and staff and fellow spark plugs. My name's Jeff Hammer. I'm a lifelong Speedway resident and I'm here tonight representing the Indianapolis Radio Club. The Indianapolis Radio Club is requesting permission to use the Speedway Municipal Center North Parking Lot to conduct its part in the largest disaster communications exercise in the world, otherwise known as the American Radio Relay League's Amateur Radio Field Day, on the, starting at 8:00 AM on June 22nd through 6:00 PM on June 23rd. It is an overnight event. Field Day is conducted by hundreds of amateur radio groups and tens of thousands of amateur radio operators around the country during the fourth full weekend in June. The public is invited and to both observe and participate in the exercise. And in view of our 501(c)(3) status, as well as the public service nature of this event, we are requesting a waiver of any fees. And I can go more in depth if any of you have any questions, but as I understand it, you had a read-ahead packet. Does anyone have any questions, concerns?
Just as one other note, they will have access to our lobby for the restroom facility there. We'll provide them the codes and the key fobs to use that and get in there.
Okay, a motion?
Make a motion to approve a special events request for Amateur Radio Field Day.
I'll second.
All right, any questions for Mr. Hammer?
Jeff, I'm sure you got a cleanup crew and to round up anything from that standpoint. And then also, I noticed that you should, they'll have both exits and entrances open for the police and fire.
Correct. We will not block any throughway in the parking lot. And we do have, we will take care of the trash and at a minimum, it will look as good as it did when you got there, if not better.
How many people are you expecting from a volunteer participation standpoint?
So from our internal participation, at any given time, we might have 10 to 15 people there. We really have no way of determining how much of the public's going to show up, though.
Any concern on noise?
No.
Just being an overnight event and people living right there?
No. We will do everything that we can to keep the noise at a minimum. We don't want a lot of noise either, either because it makes it hard for us to hear the radio communications.
Right.
We will not be using any generators unless it's an absolute necessity. Our intent is to run everything off of battery and solar power.
Okay, awesome.
Is this an annual event?
It is an annual event. This is the first time we've done it in Speedway, though.
Okay, very cool. All right, any other?
And I don't want to give away your address, but I know you live in that.
I live very close.
Yeah, so I think it's good that he lives very close because he doesn't want to upset his neighbors.
That's true.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our special event request for Amateur Radio Field Day at the SMC, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. I hope to see you out there if you can make it.
Thank you.
All right, next is a request for temporary partial road closure of 14th Street for the Parket Pocket, ah, no, I was gonna mess that up, Pocket Park Grand Opening. Tammy?
Yes, I'm here asking for a temporary road closure for 14th Street between the Alley and Main Street to be closed on Saturday, April 13th. Our event to, for the opening ceremony of the Plaza on Main and Ribbon Cutting will be 2:00 to 4:00 PM, so we are requesting the road closure from 1:30 to no later than 4:30 or immediately after the event. We have a band that will be playing. The band is Damaged Goods. That was sponsored by the Speedway Suites. We want to thank them for sponsoring that band for our opening. And we would like to invite the community out to bring their lawn chairs and enjoy the afternoon with us. It does look like there's a pretty good interest based on the event page, and having that road closure will benefit us to be able to have more people in that area for the opening.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the temporary road closure of 14th Streets between the Alley and Main Street, per your request.
I'll second.
All right, any questions?
No questions. Just excited to have the new Plaza on Main opened up and excited that we have a band the first, the first night and everything, so thank you for organizing and all the hard work and to the SRC and team for getting that project completed. Excited to see it open.
Yeah, it looks great. It really looks great.
Yeah, they've done a good job.
Okay, all those in favor of approving our partial road closure of 14th Street for the Pocket Park Grand Opening, say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes 5-0.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
All right, next is our approval of quote from Ray Skilman for the purchase of pickup trucks for the Public Works Department. Grant?
Yes, so we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, but we did solicit quotes from three places, Ford, Chevy, and Dodge. Staff would prefer the crew cab, which is the second item listed on the little table, as you can see there. The low bid or low quote was from Ray Skilman Ford in the amount of $45,987, and we are requesting the purchase of five of these pickup trucks. With that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Ray Skilman for the purchase of pickup trucks for the Public Works Department.
I'll second.
All right, any questions or comments for Grant?
Are these replacement of current?
Yeah, they're just older models that we'll just rotate them, so the oldest models will be handed down to less active uses or sold, depending on what condition they're in, and then these will replace those in our fleets.
Was that part of the budget, Grant?
These, these funds were put into last year's budget, but because we could not get the vehicles, we will need to do, Philip, I believe, an additional appropriation at some point in the year for these. They'll come from the Water Department, the Sewer Department, and the Street Department.
Okay.
All right, I'll, if there's no other questions, call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our quote from Ray Skilman for the purchase of pickup trucks for the Public Works Department, say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes 5-0. Next item, is this, just, just a quick question for you, Grant. Is this Resolution 2024-2 or 3?
It should be 03.
03, okay, that's what I thought.
I think we kept 2 on the agenda because this was actually on your agenda in February, but we used that number. It wasn't necessarily approved, so we've now went to number 3. Ultimately, it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
I wish we would have corrected that and caught that on the agenda itself.
Yeah, no, no problem. All right, so our next item is Resolution 2024-03, which is a resolution accepting the transfer of property from HG Rebar Speedway 2500 and dedication of right-of-way. Grant?
Yes, so as part of the Founder Square development, we entered into a development agreement in 2018 with Rebar. They would construct those roads according to our standards. We provided some funding for a portion of that infrastructure. The agreement was that once it was completed, finalized, that we would accept those as public streets. So, Brian, if you could show the exhibit. Let's see if he brings that up. Not a great exhibit, but it's, it's what we have. This will be attached to the resolution. So we are adopting Founder Square from its beginning point at Crawfordsville Road between Crew Car Wash and the Aldi Grocery Store, to that stop sign, then going east towards 25th Street and High School Road, and all the way to the north by the Hampton Inn. And you might be saying, well, why are we accepting that? It's a public street because it does have the ability to connect into that apartment complex. In the future, if that redevelops or changes, that will be a terminated road there and will be marked as such, but it can become a future access to that area. So we have reviewed this with Steph Kelpatrick, who's the attorney for Rebar. We made a couple changes. I think she made a couple of changes. I am going to go on record, there's one concern that I have. There is the lot where the daycare is going to be built between the senior apartments and Crew Car Wash. It does not have enough property to allow for that road to be punched through on the west side of it to get to the future area of the potential extended-stay hotel. Because of that, we required them to build that road according to our standard on the north side of their project to access the TNH investment property, that future daycare, and the future hotel on that other site. So that will be their access point to those projects. I think initially, when everything was laid out, it was thought it might punch through, but lots changed over the past five years, and that made that difficult. And the town did agree to those changes over the years. Economic Development Director, et cetera, approved those changes, which would kind of change the way that, those properties would be accessed. The roads have been built to our standard. They're acceptable. They've been inspected. We recommend approval of those and acceptance of those. They will be our streets and we'll maintain and upkeep them. Snow removal will be something we do because those are public streets accessing that development. So I'll answer any questions or Bob, if you have any other points to add. And that road I referenced on the north side of the, is Exhibit B. It's, he doesn't have it on the thing, but it is Exhibit B on the, on the resolution itself. I hope that made sense, that I didn't.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2024-03, Resolution accepting the transfer of property from HG Rebar Speedway 2500 LLC and the dedication of right-of-way, as presented by Grant Klinehans.
I'll second.
All right, any questions, comments?
Grant, have we had an inspection of the current road as it stands right now?
Yeah.
And it's fully acceptable, acceptable.
It's been built to our standard. It's in good condition. There's no apparent issues, and that's been put in for almost, almost two and a half years now.
So all the stormwater runs to the west and then goes in that retention pond?
There's a large ditch.
Yeah.
It connects into that and goes into that retention pond.
And that's acceptable right now, the way?
Yep, that's also been inspected. There were some improvements that were asked to be done to that, about $69,000 worth of regrading, some temporary dam works to be put up and some dredging. That's been accomplished. And that pond will not be maintained by the town. That will be maintained by the association in the, the properties, the property owners.
Okay.
They'll have to pay for upkeep of that, maintenance of it. If in the future they need improvements, they'll have to pay for that.
I was gonna say, because there's a lot of trees growing up in that right now.
Sure.
And that swell, as it's being diverted into Eagle?
Over the past couple of months, it has been cleaned out quite a bit, though.
I know, too, but I'm talking about the out, outtake.
Oh, got it, yeah. Going south.
Yeah.
Yep. So once again, that's not town drainage. It is owned by the association.
Right.
The roads, however, are our responsibility.
Okay.
So just to clarify, so going, looking back on the back page for Exhibit B, that's gonna be punched through at a later date?
It has to be completed before that hotel development can go in. It's, it's about halfway completed at this point.
Okay.
Yep, TNH built it about halfway. The daycare will build it another, I don't know, 500 feet, and then the hotel will finish that out. And once again, that's the way they'll access their properties, not off of Founder Square where Crew Car Wash is.
But speaking of that, how will, because I know there's a ton of complaints because of Crew on a busy day that gets backed up onto either Crawfordsville or High School Road. What does that do to the town as far as enforcement and our potential liability at that point?
I don't know about liability. What I would say is, we have reached out to Crew on several different occasions, talking about options. For instance, maybe putting a sign out, no more car wash at this point, because they do line up on the streets. So that's something we're gonna have to continue meeting with them and discussing, and I, I hope that we have a better resolution here this spring.
But does this being a public road give us more enforcement at that point?
I don't know if it gives us more enforcement. It allows those other projects to access that property without coming into contact with the Crew Car, Crew Car Wash traffic.
Okay.
So any additional changes in traffic patterns that would have to happen in that area, since now we're taking ownership of that road, that would be our responsibility?
Yes, yep. If we're gonna change the direction of a road or?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-03, accepting the transfer of property from HG Rebar Speedway 2500 and dedication right-of-way, say aye.
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 Opposed? Pass, Resolution passes 5-0. Next item is Ordinance 1387, which amends the Town Code of Speedway, Chapter 13.32, relating to sewer usage and prohibited industrial discharge. Brad will help us with more details there.
All right, thank you. Every five years, the EPA requires us to reevaluate our local limits for industrial users. So if you look on Page 2 there, we've been working on this for quite some time. The EPA sent us back what their recommendations are in red, so you see the current concentration there on the right and what they are recommending there as well.
So what I would add, because we accepted all the changes, the italicized bolded areas, our numbers that changed. He mentioned red. The initial draft had red, but when we accepted the changes, we left it in that fashion. And Brad, can you tell us if those were higher or lower generally than our previous numbers?
The new numbers will be lower.
Okay.
So, yeah. And they've also added 2 as well, mercury and moly. I call it moly, it's kind of a tongue twister, so.
Okay, do we have a resolution or a?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1387 and ordinance amending the Town Code of Speedway, Chapter 13.32, relating to sewer usage and prohibited industrial discharge.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions, comments for Brad? All right, I'll call for a vote.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approving Ordinance 1387, which amends the Town Code of Speedway, Chapter 13.32, relating to sewer usage and prohibited, prohibited industrial discharge, say aye.
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 Those opposed? It passes 5-0. Going too fast. All right, our next item is approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. This evening, I have requests for both. The utility adjustments were presented to you on four pages, and a total of 10 customers would be affected. That's from a date range of March 7th to April 1st of this year. Then the claims are from March 7th to March 27th of this year, and that's on 16 pages, and they total $1,274,578.74.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims and utility adjustments.
I'll second.
All right, any questions for Philip? All right, call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our claims and utility adjustments, say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes 5-0. Thank you, Philip. All right, reports from our department supervisors. We will start with Cheryl McRoy with her Communications Department.
Good evening, Council. First, I want to thank you for approving the Amateur Radio Field Day. I'll work with Jeff on getting that information out to the community. I think there'll be a lot of interest. When we sat in with the committee initially, it was really interesting, he was telling us more about it, so I think that will be a good event. Shout out to Anthony Ramean, who leads the Speedway Home Helpers Program. There are currently 38 volunteers who'll be helping spruce up and do some repair projects on our Speedway neighbors by working on 14 different homes this Saturday. 38 volunteers.
... and got the sewer repaired down on DeSoto Lane. Waterworks, the plant treated 62 million gallons for March. They are weed eating, mowing at the wells in the plant, and reading meters. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Appreciate you filling in.
Thank you. Hey, no problem.
All right, Carmen Letheg with her Economic Development.
Good evening, Councilors. I won't belabor the park, but that's, I've been helping Tammy and Jennifer Miller on the park opening, just wrapping up some of the items that were left. The cameras are installed and are now being monitored, and yeah, I think mostly we're all ready for, for the April 13th celebration, so that's exciting. I've been working on a lot of stuff. I think I've been here a month now, and I've been doing a lot of reading about TIFs and legal documents and going through a lot of files, so that's what's been taking up a lot of my time, just trying to, you know, take in the landscape of what I'll be doing for, you know, the next, how many, how many years? I don't know what I'm saying right now. And so the other thing I've been doing is meeting with some business owners and setting up meetings for the SRC members in order to really think about what the next year is gonna look like for, as far as my responsibilities and the priorities that we'll be working on. And in that same vein, the last thing I'll mention is, we're preparing for a planning session with the SRC at the end of this month to create those priorities and a work plan and some deliverables for me in my position as Economic Development Director for the remainder of the 2024, the plan for the 2024 year. That's all. Any questions?
No, I'm sure it's, it's been probably a lot to wrap your arms around, so.
Yeah.
So kudos for making it in a month.
Thank you. Yes, there's been a lot of stuff. There's, it's so, it's so interesting, and I'm happy to be here, but it is a lot to learn, so. And thank you, Grant, for all your help and everyone who's answered my, my questions that I've had so far, so I appreciate, appreciate all of the help I've been getting.
All right, thank you, Carmen.
You're helping me more than I'm helping you.
I'll, I'll take that. I'm not sure that's true.
Okay, Town Manager report from Grant.
I just have two items. So the Resident Academy final session is tomorrow evening, as Chief Upchurch mentioned. Public safety will start here at the Municipal Center with police and then finish up at Fire Station, doing some different activities. The graduating class will be presented to the Town Council at the April 22nd meeting, and we will present them with their certificates. I think we have about 21 that are in line to graduate, so not bad. Also, just a reminder, this meeting tonight took the place of the upcoming April 8th regular meeting, so just a reminder that that meeting is canceled. That's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Grant. Report from our council members. We'll start with Councilor Sarah Gardner.
I don't have much. I think most of what I was gonna say was already talked about. Just a reminder about the Home Helpers on Saturday. That event, I know a lot of us participated last fall, and that was a great event. I'm sure they would still accept more volunteers, so if you haven't signed up, do. And I love the spark coming and Jimmy, I mean, come for that, right? And it's just such a blessing to be able to give back to the community and just see behind the scenes and just really help people that need it. So that's a great event, so thank you, Anthony Ramean, for that. Again, no school next week. I know I keep seeing things on, pop up on Facebook of that with the eclipse. There is no school, just a reminder for parents and everyone to go to the park and go see Tammy on their bikes, not on their cars, right? Walk and get to the park. I know youth sports are starting, so just a thank you to all the volunteers. It's all run by volunteers, so the coaches and all the people that are working so hard behind the scenes, soccer, baseball, softball, thank you for all that you do for the kiddos. And just a funny story to end, just a little, little snippet of why I love living here. A lot of us were gone last week on spring break, and we had carpet installed, and a neighbor called the police department because a white van showed up in our front yard, and they knew we were out of town, and they knew that wasn't our vehicle. So I love that, you know, not only did the police come, they called me on my cellphone because I know him. And so it's just the fun of the small town and taking care of each other and seeing, you know, we just know when things are out of order, so I just thought that that was a great, just reminder of why we live here. So thank you for my neighbors for calling and the police for showing up and just, again, our little community is so special, so.
Were they able to finish the installation of the carpet?
They did.
Okay, they didn't run away and never come back?
They did, yeah. Carpet was installed and all is good, so, yes. That was fun to come home to. New carpet.
I can imagine.
Yes. That's all I got.
All right, Councilor Sean Harold?
Yeah, so just one quick thing, and it kind of hits on some of what Tammy mentioned earlier, and then some of what Sarah mentioned. Obviously, with the weather warming up, lots more activity going on at our parks, lots of sports starting, kids are outside running around. So just a call out to please, you know, as you're around the parks, you're around the schools, please drive carefully, be on the lookout for the kids running around from all their activities and playing at the park. Just, yeah, hopefully everybody's getting out and enjoying the weather, and just want everybody to be safe, so.
All right, thank you. Councilor Noblet?
Yeah, thank you. Just like to say that I want to bring it to the council's attention that Bob Fishburne, 34 years last month, and I think that's commendable. Yeah, the work that you guys do as chiefs, and there are a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes and making stuff work and be there when you need it, so thank you.
35, 36.
I know, I know.
I know, I know. Got the, got the, uh... I also want to just bring the attention that I know that this is springtime, it's cleanup season, and there's several opportunities for the public of just, you see when you're out walking, pick up the trash, it just makes the whole community look that much better, and I think little things that if everybody pitches in, it will make a big difference. And I know our major thoroughfares, we've got a lot of trash, you know, from a lot of establishments that, you know, that people just throw their bag right out the window, and as they're going down the street, and I think eventually, hopefully, we can get, you know, get it cleaned up and keep it cleaned up at that point in time, so. It makes it easier for when you have everybody working together. That's all I got for the night.
All right, thank you. Vice President Sargent?
Yeah, well, hopefully those who traveled for spring break had a wonderful time. I know my family and I did, still wish we were on the beach, but back to reality this week. Just wanted to say, those who put their name in for the Golf Cart Ordinance Exploratory Committee, thank you, there was a huge turnout, a lot of interest, glad to see, and just a variety of people from all over the town put their names in, and just love seeing that involvement through those things hopefully we'll look at, and whether or not goes forward, we'll see, but it's just exciting to see that, that folks are excited to get involved. Hopefully, didn't get too fooled by any April Fools' Day memes out there, I know I saw some buckies coming to Indiana, Brazil, I think was one, but hopefully didn't fall for, for any of those, but anyway, that's really all I had.
All right, well, thank you. I'll just end by saying, I hope everybody had a great, excellent Easter weekend last weekend, and spring break before that, whether you spent that here in town or somewhere else, hopefully you had an enjoyable week and a half. So with that, our sixth meet, sixth meeting of 2024 is adjourned at 7:48.